Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth and members and colleagues on City Council. Welcome to our special call meeting. And I would now ask that Madam Clerk, would you call the row, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Here.
Mr. Battle. Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mr. Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here.
Ms. Chapman, please proceed with your items, ma'am.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Barnes, members of Portsmouth City Council and Portsmouth family. This afternoon, we have a couple of presentations and an overview for the high school athletic fields and the Charles Peet Field. If we're ready, Chief Jenkins will be our first presenter. He will be providing a presentation on utilizing and integrating the citywide cameras and other crime reduction strategies that are currently being explored by the city. Chief Jenkins?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chief, and welcome.
Today, I'm going to give you an update and a presentation on some technological initiatives that we are currently seeking to enhance our crime prevention within the city. In particular, we're going to highlight a company called FUSIS, talk about gunshot detection hardware, in addition to some, in addition to Speedlight, SpeedZone cameras, and also our individual endeavor, our camera giveaway. Alright, so the first slide, the first slide that you will see is a depiction of the gunshot incidents that we've had within the city from January 2002 until June of 2002.
Twenty-two, I'm sorry.
So currently, if you will look at the actual diagram itself, what you will see is a representation of circles, red firearms that are white, yellow firearms, and obviously some others that we're going to relate to homicides that have occurred in the city. The yellow represents calls that we have had that are actually related to weapons law violations where we've taken a report. The ones that were represented with what appears to be a bullseye will be anything that's consistent with gunshots, fire calls that are within the city. So, we relate this to our camera initiative. So currently, the city has approximately 400-plus cameras that we have operated in the city. However, we do not have any way to integrate those cameras together so that they are able to be a force multiplier for us. Those cameras are closed-circuit cameras, traffic cameras, and also security cameras. If you pay attention to on the diagram, you'll see represented, there are small circles, some of which are blue, some of which are purple, and some of which are a darker color, green. Those represent various cameras that are city-owned throughout the city. The ones that are in purple represent speed cameras or red light cameras that we have that are deployed, and you'll notice that they're on major thoroughfares throughout the city. The ones that are in green and blue represent cameras that are city-owned, that are either attached to a city-owned building or inside of a facility such as City Hall. So currently, the police department is working on a real-time crime center, and that is going to be the focal point of all video camera feeds that will come into the city. It is going to be located at our Police Operations Center that's located at 700 Port Center Parkway, and as of right now, we are investigating how we're going to plan to staff that. We are likely to utilize a combination of employees and also volunteers, those individuals who have successfully completed the Portsmouth Police Department's Citizens Academy. Obviously, our goal is to utilize this real-time data to put us in the best position to be successful and also enhance our situational awareness when it comes to combating crime. So, the way that we have identified, we've identified some technology that is going to integrate our current camera system that we have, our current cameras in the city, and we're in the process, I'm going to show you a couple of videos of the actual company, and it's a company called FUSIS. Can you switch that for me, please? So why we, why they get that queued up? So, FUSIS is a system that is basically located in the cloud, is going to require from us minimal setup. It also is something that we are, have already taken the initiative to purchase and that we're far in development of getting that to us. We had our first initial call on this today, and we expect to be delivered these components that can be set up in various parts of the city within the next couple of weeks. Yes, sir.
This is a big initiative, and it'll allow our police and first responders to look at the cameras in the schools. We could see what the response is. We could watch our guys. We could see if people are injured.
It's actually our second video.
What difference this makes to first responders is incredible because the single factor working against you with responding to injuries like this is time.
Investigators going out, literally walking block to block, looking up at cameras, trying to determine which business may own that camera, inquiring inside. All this takes hours or days of investigative time to try to determine, in fact, where these cameras are coming from. We're trying to more quickly obtain video evidence of criminal activity. This initiative will take off, and we'll be able to expand our network of safety throughout the city.
We can see real-time what's going on, and that really helps us monitor those events and make sure that they're safe. That officer can literally livestream what they're seeing when it's happening. It's phenomenal technology.
What's really neat about this is it can take hundreds of video feeds at once. When they need to know what's going on, it's going to make the big difference for everyone's safety. This is safer for our first responders, safer for our kids, safer for our community. It's really awesome, and I'm very excited about this.
I wish I would have had this when I was still working the road. This is a...
So, what FUSIS does, and we're going to get into it on the next, so what it does is, it takes our existing camera that we have in the city. We will bring the hardware that they send to us. That hardware will be adapted into our network. It's minimally invasive, which comes, sends out an encrypted signal, and so it lessens the chance that we are going to be an attack of a virus or things of that nature, which is something that we're obviously, we are concerned of. Also, what it does, if you can go back to the, to the presentation. There are parts of, there are parts of this that we are, that we look into when we talk about critical incidents, things that we hear about in the news every single day, those sudden and unexpected occurrences, things like active shooters. Obviously, we're concerned about that in the schools, governmental builders, and private businesses. This is a Navy town, military town, and so we're concerned about terroristic attacks, unlawful protests. When you think of unlawful protests, we can think about situations that we've had occur here, and how something like FUSIS could have helped us at least monitor those situations. It was very instrumental in Elizabeth City when they had their protests following their officer-involved shooting. So they were able to monitor the crowds to see what the difference was between a peaceful protest and whether or not the officers needed to engage versus somebody that was doing a destruction of property, and we needed to rapidly deploy personnel to that. Violent crime, obviously, we're concerned about carjackings and shootings and robberies. These FUSIS, again, deployed at our intersections, at our cameras, at our locations where we have cameras, acts as a force multiplier for us where we have additional eyes that can capture video and of crimes being committed, vehicles leaving, things of that nature. So, obviously, for us, think in terms of what we're experiencing right now is most of our crimes are related to vehicles. Weapons are being transported in cars, cars are being utilized in these shootings, and so the ability to be able to capture license plates, cars, vehicle descriptions, and all of that is going to be paramount for us as an investigative lead, hopefully to solve these crimes and be able to address those individuals through the court system. Those soft targets that we have to be concerned about, Sunset Thursdays, where we have large crowds out, and we have, think about vehicles turning on to streets and plowing down individuals. Being able to have cameras in that area to be able to hopefully give us an advantage to be able to see those things and deploy officers to them before it becomes an issue. If you could go to that first, the very first video, and this kind of, kind of give you just an overview of how it's deployed. So, while they're doing this, I want to talk about in particular how it works within our governmental building. So, think in, think in terms of school system. The school, obviously, we're concerned about privacy. We don't want cameras in school all times of the day with law enforcement having the opportunity to do anything. So, in the event that you have a, an incident occurring at school, the school controls the feed. So if you're having a need for emergency response to the school, say you did have an active shooter, the school would then turn on that alert, and then the response would be sent to the police department. At that point in time, we now have real live time feed of the school, of the governmental building, or the business to be able to look at what's going on, and that information is sent not only through MDCs but also through officer cellphones. So every officer that has a phone, that would be able to get that real-time feed to be able to see suspect information, clothing descriptions, and where they may be inside the building. Go ahead, sir.
Smart cities thrive on intelligence, and the most powerful form of intelligence available to a city is video. But till now, the fusion of public and private video was impossible without millions of dollars of investment, thousands of hours of custom integration, and new cameras and software. Every day, thousands of calls are made to 911 centers, but 911 operators and first responders are stuck working with limited information regarding the location and nature of situations as they unfold, and the time spent gathering intelligence leads to lost property and lives. Enter FUSIS. FUSIS combines all public and private video resources into one common operating system in minutes with very little setup time and no change to the camera systems in place. It starts with the FUSIS core. Within seconds, FUSIS detects, analyzes, and connects every camera on the building's network and builds a separate secure feed to a single web-based platform known as FUSIS One. The video feed is securely encrypted and transmitted either by an ongoing livestream or on-demand based on an alert. Policy-based sharing ensures video is only transmitted when required and adheres to the privacy considerations of its users. For example, schools may choose to limit video sharing to emergency situations like an active shooter event, and unlike other video systems, FUSIS brings internal cameras onto your platform as well. Businesses may choose to share live video across a multi-campus environment while sharing only on alarm to first responders. The FUSIS camera registry also enables entire communities to collect and securely share camera locations and recorded video evidence between private and public sources. In the event of a theft, for example, police can automatically request footage. The store owner can securely share recorded as well as live video feeds to aid in the investigation. Plus, FUSIS goes beyond video, enabling field-based users to transmit their location, send panic alerts, receive image and text alerts, and communicate directly with FUSIS One via an iOS or Android-compatible app. FUSIS resides at the intersection of public and private video and IoT, building bridges within communities, making smart cities smarter and keeping their residents safer.
If you could go back to the presentation. So, talking about cost, obviously, which is a big issue when it comes to this, and it's probably been one of the major hurdles that we've had to face in probably having this technology before. So, the setup of this is fast and requires minimal hardware, as I stated before. It requires no activation fee. It already plugs into our existing camera or network and is encrypted. The video feeds are transferred via a live feed, and they're based on an ongoing alert. Again, if you have a business that is linked to this particular system, robbery alarm, you have the ability to turn those cameras on, they directly feed to the police, to the police department. Again, active shooter, they directly turn on and feed to the police department. The annual subscription for this is $125,000, and again, it ties in all of our current camera systems. So think in terms of this. London Oaks has an individual camera system. We could deploy one of our boxes to London Oaks and then utilize all of their cameras. Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority has an individual camera system. We could deploy a box there, and it would tie all of those cameras into our real-time crime center. You have, and what makes this unique is you have the ability to have that customizable, so an officer that works in that area can pick the cameras that they want to monitor if they're live feed cameras. And again, if something happens, those, say, and I'll get into it a little bit later, a tip comes out, that person can take a picture of that individual and send it to police headquarters. Headquarters can send that out to all officers in that area who now have a description of that individual. This does not require a long-term contract. We can terminate this with a 30-day notice and be, receive a reimbursement based on prorated basis. So a couple of things that I want to highlight also with this system is FUSIS Registry. It is a voluntary system. The company will provide us a website. The City of Atlanta right now is utilizing this, where they're basically saying, similar to what we've said in the past couple of weeks, hey, we have this system, we're asking citizens to voluntary register their cameras. In the event that an incident happens in your area, we will send you a link asking, can you send any evidentiary video that you may have to us? And again, it's a voluntary system. FUSIS Tips, again, it is a component which allows individuals to utilize their cellphones to text tips to the police department along with photos, videos, and things of that nature. It is, can be used as enhancement to our P3 Tips line, 1-800-Lock You Up, and also our City 311, which we currently have. And finally, this is something that came up last night where we talked about reverse 911. This is also a component that individuals can sign up for through FUSIS Notify. Basically, you go on, it is a free to the citizens, you go on, and you can be notified of any incidents that we deem are important, whether it be active shooters, street closures, or, or serious weather that you need to be concerned about. Alright, so I'm going to move forward and talk about gunshot detection. If you don't mind, I'll wait to the end to answer whatever questions that you may have. Okay? So we, we talked several, probably a couple of months about ShotSpotter, and so I'm going to talk about that a little bit along with some other technology that we've also identified. So, gunshot detection notifies the police department within one minute of a triangulation of shots fired in a particular area and gives officers the ability to respond to that area in times when you might not be notified, puts you better in a more accurate location to be able to catch the perpetrators or solve the crime. Our initial coverage area that we identified was three and a half square miles through ShotSpotter that we, based on the data, thought were good locations to place these apparatus. Through ShotSpotter, the cost was $245,000 a year with a $45,000 one-time setup fee and a reoccurring cost of $245,000 with discounts that could be offered for multi-year contracts. Later on, we identified, within the last couple of weeks, we identified another company called Flock Industries. Flock Industries has several components that make this company a little bit more unique. They both offer different things. So, Flock's price is $185,000 with a $350 setup fee, a reoccurring cost of approximately $90,000 with no discounts on multi-year. Now, some of the things that make this a little bit different is that Flock automatically integrates with FUSIS, which we've already purchased. There is no, with ShotSpotter, we would have to purchase a additional third-party application to be able to make all of them communicate together. Flock has the ability to take our existing cameras that we have, say we have, we wanted to put a license plate reader at the intersection of High and Court. They can take a, take, have the ability to turn that camera into a LPR. So, there are some things that they do different than, than ShotSpotter. Also, unlike ShotSpotter, and again, I'm going to highlight ShotSpotter again, but also unlike them, the advanced license plate reader, which is a segment of evidence, segments evidence into silos, Flock's system not only detects gunshots but also screeching tires, breaking glass, and even has the ability to differentiate between saws. So when you think about Cadillac converters, think about the fact that we have street racers going on. So, screeching tires could detect, be detected, turn on license plate readers, turn on cameras in that area, and you have the ability to hopefully capture persons violating the law and then have an additional mechanism to investigate. As I've talked about, we talked about before with ShotSpotter. ShotSpotter enables us rapid and precise police response to gunfire. It allows us to recover evidence such as shell casings and utilize ATF NIBIN, which is the gunshot, National Gunshot Data Bank, basically shell casings and things of that nature. Streamlines our actionable leads and case management, and is actually a deterrent for crime. Now, when I talk about the two, Virginia Beach and Newport News both have ShotSpotter. Chesapeake, Suffolk, and Hampton have Flock. There is some conversation, to my understanding, that this, there are some regional conversations about one over the other, and that's something that probably have additional conversation with later on. One of the things that is unique to Flock is that with their LPR, their license plate reader, they have one that is called Flex. Flex is completely portable, meaning we have a area which is now sprung up for us as a uptick in crime. We can take and deploy a license plate reader or a camera in that area to be able to start capturing some of this data. Now, one of the things I need to highlight, because I'll, obviously, when we start talking about recovering people's information, data, there is always concern about Big Brother. So, we talk about, one of the things that we have to highlight is that, that Flock maintains that information, and based on our state law, they only can retain that information for 30 days, and then they have to purge it. So we don't retain any data when it comes to license plates or people's personal information regarding that. Again, this is just a little bit more information about LPRs and the fact that they increase investigative leads and also have the ability to locate stolen vehicles. So, in addition to that, we are, have narrowed down our license plate reader initiative, and we are in the process of, we narrowed it down to one vendor at this point. We pretty much know who we want to go with. We're waiting to do some more due diligence before we make an announcement. You might have heard several of our sister cities have already embarked upon license plate readers, Chesapeake and most recently Suffolk. So, there's been conversation with the school. Obviously, we're concerned about the speeding through the school zones, but also potential accidents and things of that nature that can occur involving our schoolchildren. This is not a, this is not something that would run all of the time. I'll give you, for example, Chesapeake currently deploys theirs. They run it 15 minutes before school starts and 15 minutes thereafter. They're averaging 96 infractions a day. This particular company that we are looking at, the way that it's broken down is that the first $4,500 for the month is taken off to pay for the camera system. The rest would be reverted back to the locality. So also, think in terms of this, as we expand our initiatives so far as cameras are concerned, this has the ability to be able to supplement and help us be able to put more cameras and other things into the community. But by, by no means, this is a money-making venture, but it is an opportunity for us to supplement what we do have. Last but not least, our endeavor for our doorbell giveaway. We've, we've embarked upon this a little over a month ago, and I can tell you, we have had overwhelming response from the citizens trying to procure one of these, so much so that this is the reason why we decided to go to a random lottery rather than passing them out just as individual. So, currently, individuals have the ability to go to our police department website and register for the lottery. We're going to deploy those based on the areas that we are in related to rock the block, and then as we move, we'll continue to go from there. The residents, what should be noted is they maintain full control of those cameras and the video that it recovers. We do hope that they will register those cameras with us, but they do not have to. And again, I have to make that perfectly known. They do not have to register, register those cameras, but we are pushing them there as a deterrent. Any questions?
Counselor Man Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chief. Great presentation. A couple of questions. Getting back to FUSIS, what, what's the projected operational cost of that?
So, FUSIS is $125,000 a year.
Well, that's, that's like a license fee, but I'm talking about our commitment. FUSIS, as well as ShotSpotter or any of the rest of the shot detecting things, are going to require a relatively rapid response, and are, do we have that capability as we sit here tonight? And is there gonna be some additional costs to make that happen?
So, sir, to answer your question specifically related to FUSIS, we've had extensive conversation. We were waiting for the additional shoe to fall when it came to the backend. Where's the rest of the cost gonna come in at? That cost, at this point in time, when it comes to FUSIS, has not come. As our understanding, that FUSIS is $125,000 with no additional cost unless there are other things that are added to it. So that is our understanding with that. When it comes to our other initiatives such as whether it be ShotSpotter or Flock, there was probably an additional 200-plus thousand that we're talking about. So I would imagine we're talking about somewhere about $350,000 as a rough estimate. The difference between, one of the things that Flock does offer that's a little bit different than ShotSpotter, and again, ShotSpotter, our initial rollout was for three and a half miles. So we do have the ability to customize that, the same with Flock. So we can go in and say, hey, we wanna drop this down from three and a half miles. Let's go, let's look at two miles and see what that will get us. Maybe we can get less shot detection but more cameras. So they're completely customizable. The thing that is most important is that we get something in place and then begin to expand upon it. As long as we have something in place, we can then start, as the money becomes available, start to look at funding additional things. When Suffolk first rolled out theirs, they started out with 22 cameras. They're now expanding to another 25 cameras that are gonna be in that area. And again, you can strategically place those cameras. There is no real hard wiring depending on what system that you go to. There is solar and the apparatus itself. So there's a lot of things that one offers over the other, but I would say we're looking in that realm of 350, 400,000 a year.
Well, on FUSIS, though, somebody has to monitor that. That software just ties our existing cameras together in a network. And so information is gonna be flowing to some central location. So kind of walk us through that.
So, one of the things we talked about a little, a few minutes ago was how we're gonna staff it. So we're exploring the possibility of whether we need to staff it with employees or whether we can do it with volunteers. Virginia Beach staffs their real-time crime center with volunteers, graduates of their academy. We've had some conversations with individuals doing forums who stated they would like to volunteer. So there is some possibility that we have our own citizens who we've been talking about getting involved and getting involved in what's going on, who may very well want to come in and sit and watch and monitor a camera. So there's a lot of possibilities for us, but also let's think in terms of this. Again, our officers will have the ability, maybe they have 15, 20 minutes during between calls. They can sit right in their car and monitor whatever area they're in from their cellphone. So again, it is a force multiplier for us, for us to be able to monitor, put as many eyes in particular areas as possible.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Battle, sir, you have the floor, then Vice Mayor Barnes.
A very good job, sir.
Yes, sir.
You did a very good job explaining the integration of what we're looking at. But what's the purpose of announcing that advantage?
So obviously, sir, and I'll be quite frank, this is what we've been, this is what's been coming from council for the last several weeks, is what are we doing as a police department?
No. I mean, announcing to the public, I mean, not to us, to the, a separate announcement. I understand announcing it to us and, you know, having it on the presentation on, but is it something you want to announce to everybody that we have?
So I'll be quite frank, sir, there is no secrets in the way that we battle crime. We're hoping that it's gonna be a deterrent for people to not come into our city and do what they're doing. So the more information that we can put out in here, the same reason we said, hey, we're giving these doorbell cameras away, stay away from that house. The same reason we're saying, we're gonna put this camera at this intersection, maybe you'll go somewhere else and brace. That is the reason why we're having this announcement, to say that Portsmouth is not the place to come and do crime.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
First, I want to say, great job, great presentation. As somebody who has been very voiceful regarding the crime in the city, I'm actually happy and pleased about what we're doing so far. My first question is regarding the notification process. So when the speaker spoke last night, he spoke about something happening in his neighborhood and not being informed. So you're saying this helps them to be informed when it comes to the FUSIS?
Depending on what information we put out.
Okay.
So again, if we have an active shooter, obviously, we want people to stay away from that particular area. We want to make sure that we are dealing with, make sure we can get our people in, particularly when you're talking about a school. You're gonna have parents that are gonna be coming to check on their children, to get their children. So we want to say, hey, if you're coming as a parent, we want you to collect over here. So we can have that ability to send that information out to those parents that are on that system. So that they know not to necessarily run directly to the school because that lessens our ability to be able to interact with the threat that's going on. And our first job is to stop the killing, dying, and to render any type of aid to individuals that are hurt.
Okay. And you talked about the integration with the Raven. How's that beneficial, the integration process?
So one is Flock, one is Falcon, and the other was Raven. One is the LPR and one is gunshot detection.
Right.
So the Falcon is the LPR, the Raven is the gunshot detection. So again, the way, when this happens, well, think in terms of this. Shots go off or screeching tires or breaking glass, it turns on LPRs in that area and whatever existing cameras are in that area. So that information is also sent to the officer's phones and also their computers inside of their cars. So it gives them information as they're responding to the particular area. It gives us an advantage to be able to say, we already know we're looking for a red car as opposed to having a citizen have to tell us, hey, we're looking for a red car. Sometimes that information is delayed. When seconds count, this has the ability to be able to possibly give us a force multiplier. But again, we're still in the early stages.
My last question.
Yes, sir.
As far as the ring doorbells, if we're actually giving it to them, at least for that first year, is there any reason why we're not asking them to register? Like, well, I'm not, I mean, like.
Making them register.
Quieting them to register, yeah.
So again, the, what we did not want to do is deter people from getting the camera.
Okay.
We wanted to make, put as many cameras into the neighborhood as possible and with the understanding that we have some folks that are still a little bit leery. But maybe if something happens, even if they aren't registered, if something happens, they'll still say, hey, this happened in my neighborhood and here's the video, which often is what happens.
I got you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the excellent presentation. I am a fan of FUSIS, from what I've heard. My first comment is about the real-time center. I like the idea, well, of course, the employees, but the volunteers because I remember there used to be some kind of community patrol car that used to be in neighborhoods. I know that we had one in Capitol Manor. And those guys, you know, became a little fearful about, you know, just riding the street. But that would be an opportunity for them to feel safe to be in a real-time, you know, center, maybe volunteering to watch it on the camera. So I thought that was a great idea, maybe some of the civic leagues because they like being engaged for their own communities as well. And then the registry back, speaking about, you know, how do we get businesses and other partners or camera owners to register? I didn't know if it was an incentive option that could be offered. I mean, we don't want to, you know, try to pay people with some other kind of incentive and what happens if we don't get people who want to register under the registry.
So ultimately, it's about safety. And we're gonna do a heavy community engagement with the stakeholders in the community to basically help try to persuade them that this is gonna be in their best advantage. Obviously, it's a voluntary program, but again, it would be beneficial if we already have, know where these cameras are before something happens rather than having to send detectives out and trying to identify who owns what camera in what area. When we already know it, those moments count sometimes in an investigation.
And as a business who've been hit by Cadillac converters nine times, sign us up, we got cameras.
That's right.
Councilman Wood, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chief Jenkins, for the presentation. Like I say, it's a lot of important information here. And like you say, we have been pushing for some technology to assist our police department. And I think you have some great options right here in this presentation. I think Councilman Moody was trying to hit on this, but I was trying to see, do we have an idea of how many persons may staff this real-time camera center?
So depending on how many monitors we have, and again, at the very minimal, we're probably talking about two at a time. And we're talking the plausibility of this being a 24-hour-a-day operation. So, you know, we're still exploring how many, what type of numbers that's gonna take for us to be able to do that. If you volunteer during the day versus a paid person at night, whether or not that this is gonna have a feed into our communication center so far as dispatch and is that gonna be something else additional that they can assist us with. There's a lot of components that still need to be worked out with how we man this. But also, again, it gives me the opportunity to sit at home and watch camera, just being honest. I mean, and that's literally what you have. You'll have officers, you'll have personnel that just interested in the benefit of the city that we're hoping will tune in and watch what happens. And so there's a lot that still has to be explored, but we hope to get some answers here with this relatively soon. FUSIS is, FUSIS will be up and running within the next 60 days.
Okay. And FUSIS, I'm a fan of it, I like what you guys got going on. I think a $125,000 subscription to help integrate with equipment that we already have is savings in itself. Because I think if we take on the task of trying to get equipment and satellites and wiring and, you know, everything to deploy the technology we need to get a whole new system together that will be functioning throughout our city, that's a lot of money. And if we could take advantage of this technology, I think it's a great option. But I got a question about the Flock system. $185,000 for a subscription. Is there any other way for us to acquire the technology and, you know, not be able to use the interface? I understand some of the options they have, but, you know.
So, so the, again, the benefit of both of these, ShotSpotter and Flock, is that they are customizable. We do have the ability to scale it down to make it more affordable for us and what we're able to accomplish with that. Again, I don't want to put one over the other at this point until we've finished with the procurement process. But I will say that there are some options available to us.
Right. And one last question. So do we have to talk to some of the private properties to get permission to integrate with our system once we, you know, acquire it?
Yes, sir. So again, conversations with PRHA need to happen. I've already had conversation with, I've already had conversations with the security director for London Oaks. I talked to Dr. Bracy earlier in the week and just made him aware of this technology that we had. And he shared a couple of things with me. I look forward to having a larger conversation with him and the school board to show them how this can be a game changer for us in the event that we have a tragic incident. We want to be able to get there as rapidly as possible and address the issue.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chief, excellent presentation. And also thank you for your commitment as well as your staff to serving citizens. On the first page of the presentation where you have the diagram, it's noted that there are 400-plus city-owned cameras. And with what you're looking to do, will there be any additional cameras or will this integrate what we have?
So this will integrate what we have right now, but we're already looking at additional cameras to deploy. There's conversation about deploying cameras in our parking garages. Conversation is about deploying cameras all the way up High Street. Obviously, we need to be concerned about securing the casino that's coming in and putting cameras in that particular area. So there is a lot of conversation of where cameras are gonna need to go. And so we're already in that conversation with that now.
Okay. So where we're seeing, and we're particularly, the crime we're just talking about is basically gun violence. Where we're seeing the gun violence occur, are there cameras already in these areas?
There are some, sir, that are gonna be there, particularly in the area of our traffic lights. And again, there will, the benefit of that is the license plate reader. And I'll bring you to our most recent incident that we had that occurred on South Street. The vehicle did flee going through the intersection towards South and Effingham. So them going through that would have captured a vehicle and a license plate. Again, given us, luckily, we've been able to identify suspects and they're currently wanted right now. But we're talking about additional moments that could have been lessened had we had this technology a little bit earlier.
Right. And so these crimes are occurring even with the presence of cameras. And they're occurring nationwide with cameras being present. And so it's not so much because we hear quite a bit from citizens about what are we doing. It's not so much that these things are going to deter because they are already occurring even in the presence of cameras. And I think that it puts an unfair, I would say, burden to think that a system is going to eradicate something that is not the source of the problem. That's why I commend you for what you do. And I think that when we look at using these type of systems, and for example, the FUSIS, how long has that been in place in other jurisdictions, do you know?
So FUSIS, Elizabeth City, as I stated, has it. Newport News has it. They've had it at least two or three years. Same thing as Elizabeth City. I can't tell you about other jurisdictions that actually have them. Those are the two that I do know of and that we've gone to view actually what their center looks like and how it integrates their current cameras.
Right. So we don't really have any data on how these type of technologies, how that correlates with decrease in crime.
Well, sir, I won't say that there is no data. I don't have the data to be able to tell you today. What I can tell you is there is a lot of information about successes that have happened in other areas where they've had incidents happen and that this type of technology has brought those individuals to light and be able to stand their day in court. As you're speaking of in regards to deterrent of crime or whether it stops it, that's a larger conversation where. larger conversation where we're talking about accountability. And there's a whole lot of other things, as we talk about quite a bit, that go into that. As a police department, and I'll be, there's, many of these crimes are crimes of opportunity. They're going to do them when people aren't looking, when they feel safest, and when they see that there's no officer around. So, you know, if the likelihood of them doing it when they're likely to be caught is very small. So these cameras do give us an opportunity, the more that they know that they're in the community, that they're less likely to do some of these things. And if they choose to do it, then at least it gives us an opportunity to at least catch them and let them have their day in court.
Right, right, right. Well, thank you for all you do. And like I said, I think that once we start really, and not just as a city, but as a country, addressing the root causes of crime, which we know deals with poverty and socioeconomic conditions. But like I said, I really appreciate and commend you and your staff for all that you do.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions?
Chief, thank you so much. And I did want, I wanted to ask one question.
Yes, sir.
I know I've talked to the mayor of Suffolk about employing, deploying the license plate readers.
Yes, sir.
And I was really encouraged when we started talking about it. And I knew you guys were going to get there because that just is what normally happens. But how helpful is that? I mean, I don't understand the technology. I guess it reads the license plate. But can you just share with us real brief, how helpful is that?
So again, we're talking about the ability to be able to, let's just say, oftentimes with citizens, probably one of the biggest fallacies is eyewitnesses, right? So a person can say, I saw a red car when it was burgundy. Or a person can say, I saw a silver car when it was actually gold. So those things happen quite a bit. Our eyes lie to us quite often. But this type of technology helps us be a little bit more accurate when we're talking about a person giving a partial description or seeing decals on cars or things like roof racks or damage to a vehicle, but also capturing a tag. So think in terms of you had a vehicle involved in a hit-and-run and that vehicle flees. Well, if you capture the tag, I can send an officer to that location and see if the vehicle is there. And if it is there, hey, you know what? Were you driving your car? Nah, I wasn't. At the very least, this car is now a part of evidentiary value, and we're going to take it and see if we can't figure out who was driving it. It gives us the opportunity to fingerprint it, look for DNA or anything else that might be there. So there, it just gives us a plethora of opportunities to at least stay in the game. I mean, and that's what we're looking for in law enforcement. As things change, as laws get tougher for us to do our job, we really need to rely, and from my standpoint, when we're at the staffing levels, we are, technology is a force multiplier for us to be able to put eyes and ears in the community where I don't have officers at this time.
Thank you so much, Chief.
Thank you.
Madam City Manager, you may proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Great job. Next, we will have a brief update from our engineer, James Wright, in reference to the update on the high school athletic fields and Charles Peak field.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. City teams are currently working on designs for the following recreation projects. Charles Peak Little League renovations, I.C. Norcom Athletic Field improvements, Cavalier Manor Recreation Center interim improvements, and Churchland Soccer Complex lighting upgrades. The I.C. Norcom Athletic Field improvements and Charles Peak Little League renovation designs include the total site renovations as previously shown in prior work sessions. It should be noted that the design for the fieldhouse at I.C. Norcom can be modified for future proposed improvements at the other two high schools. The Cavalier Manor Recreation Center interim improvements include replacing the gymnasium lighting, roof repairs, kitchen upgrades, ADA bathroom upgrades, and other miscellaneous enhancements. There will also be an assessment of condition of the existing gymnasium floor by the same contractor who's doing the work for the Churchland High School floor currently. The I.C. Norcom project is anticipated to be ready for advertisement by May 2023. The Charles Peak project anticipated for advertisement for construction by March 2023. The improvement of Cavalier Manor may be separated and advanced to smaller projects. That decision will be made as the design gets a little bit further down the road. The lighting upgrade at Churchland will be advertised sometime prior to the end of this calendar year. It should also be noted that the city team is also working on a public engagement strategy for the future proposed new Cavalier Manor Recreation Facility that was showed at previous work session. I'll take any questions.
Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor.
Mr. Wright, when you say the advertising, are you speaking of an RFP?
Well, put them out for bid. Yes, sir.
Right. So why is it May 2023? Any particular reason why it's not this year?
Sorry. So it takes time for the design to be completed, has to go through site plan review and other processes. The fieldhouse has to go through building plan review. And so any of those internal city reviews as part of the design process has to go through all of that. So what you saw was a 30% conceptual. Now we're into the hard design. And so the hard design comes with full site plan, full building plans, and they have to go through city review processes as well as a particular design process. So there's a 60%, a 90%, 100%, and then there's construction documents, and we go out for advertisement afterwards.
Okay. And then once you have the RFP, when are you projecting the fields, the work on the field and the fieldhouse to begin?
So once we have a 60% plan, we'll be able to sort of put in place and know exactly what we're looking at as far as construction time schedule. And so it can come back to City Council with information on both of those larger projects, particularly I.C. Norcom and Charles Peak, once we get 60% plans in hand.
And you anticipate the 60%?
60% plan sometime towards the end of this year.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
Also, I thought we also referenced Churchland High School field and Manor High School field as well.
Yeah. So I.C. Norcom has to be done in its entirety. That's a larger project. So with the schools, that's the first one that's going to be done. Probably, once we get a little bit further along in that design and get closer to putting that out for bid, we can start work on designs for the other two. They will have to be done in sequence, probably a part at each high school because events will have to be shifted around as the schools sort of give us information about what they need and how they want to progress through those projects.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Wright, the conceptual plans that we saw for that Cavalier Manor field, were they done by the city or did we use an architectural firm for those?
For the new rec center, that was done by an architect.
Okay. So is that going to be the same company that will, or does the RFP call for a whole new?
So the firms that were involved in the designs that City Council has seen, those firms are the same firms that are working on these projects. The RFP or the advertiser bid, that is the actual seat contractors for the actual construction part of the contract. For the proposed new Cavalier Manor, that is basically that public engagement piece that we're working on. Council has given us some information about as to the direction they'd like us to proceed down, what the community has yet to, we have yet to take out to community and get feedback from the community. So once we do that process, we come back to City Council and have City Council basically provide additional direction, and then we move forward from there.
Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
What does the community participation in that process look like?
I don't have that in front of me. The consultant that did the conceptual has a public engagement specialist on their team. They've talked about several different avenues, social media, charades, going out to certain community events to try to get feedback for what this facility would look like. But the plan, I haven't seen the total final version of the plan yet.
Thank you.
But perhaps that will include something like they did similarly with the City Park project at Bydaway. They called a bunker, they advertised the event for the public to participate. So it could perhaps be a situation like that, right?
Yes, sir. All options are on the table. We'll look at some of the best practices that have been used over the past, whether it's from the comp plan, the Bill 1 Portsmouth comp plan, whether it's from City Park or other city events that have had successful turnout as far as public engagement. So we'll pull in from all those sources and make that part of the plan to get as much public input moving forward as possible.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir, for your time, and thank you for participating.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Just so council is aware, those fields have been previously authorized by council, but they are currently unfunded. We have put in design funding for that, but that will be a part of the larger ARPA conversation we're about to have. So with that being said, next on the agenda is Ms. Mimi Terry, our Deputy City Manager, CFO, and she will provide an overview on the city's recommendation and priorities for various city projects for ARPA or other potential funding sources. Some of the projects, like I just said, were previously authorized by council but are currently unfunded. Thank you, Ms. Terry.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Administration, and Portsmouth Family. Today, I'm standing before you to provide a presentation on the sources of financing for the ARPA projects that we have. I would like to start by saying, I just want to give some, a quick background. So I'll be giving you information. Please bear with me, be patient. It's just to walk through some things and some terminology that I want you all to be familiar with, because these are the questions I hear when I am actually sitting and listening to the citizens' response, comments, I'll say. So I just want to say, we have a budget, we have an annual report. Our budget is a snapshot in time. As we, as the council adopts the budget, July 1, it becomes our adopted budget for the fiscal year. During the course of the year, things change. For instance, we get grants, we got a 19.3 or $1 million grant, we get grants during the year. In July, when the budget is approved, you don't know that you may get approved for a grant later on in September or October. Therefore, there is no change in the physical document that you receive as a budget. However, council approves during the course of time and during council sessions those things that will now be a part of your new budget. So I just want to make sure people understand that it is a snapshot in time that you adopt. And then as time goes on, we get funding, different sources, and then those things become a part of your budget. However, it's a snapshot in time. Okay? So then your annual report, your...
Excuse me, madam, can I just pause for one minute? Ms. Terry? So Vice Mayor has a question.
I just, I just wanted to say, so we had a speaker that was saying that it need to be in the budget. That's why you're saying that part, that's what that means as far as...
Yeah. We tend to have people who come to the podium and say, why is this not in the budget? And it would be a new item on the agenda. And so a lot of times that people in the audience don't understand is, it is a new item, it is a new budget item. It was not adopted when we adopted the budget in July. However, it is a new item. Say you adopted 20 ordinances last night that were part of grants. Those were not in the budget in July because they were brand-new grants that got approved through the state, and the council adopted them now as part of a funding source. So you won't see them in your budget that was adopted back in July. However, they are now new part, new numbers in your budget for the year.
Thank you for explaining that.
Okay. And then your annual report is your ACFOR, your annual financial, comprehensive financial report. That report is what, that's your report card for the year. The report is, it ends on June 30, and then you are audited on those numbers. It determines how you ended your year. So there are some things in report, just think of it as, how did you spend your money? What department spent what on, and how did we capture that, those numbers? So I just want to make sure that people understand the difference between your budget, which is your snapshot in time, and how you estimate spending your dollars versus your annual report at the end of the year that captures everything you spent. That's fair? I just, and this, I know you all know, but I just, for the audience and people who are at home, like my mama, I wanted to make sure that, you know, she asked those questions. And I think if she asked those questions, other people will have those questions as well. So I just wanted to clarify that before we got started.
Thank you very much.
Now, the city's sources of finance and capital projects. You have cash, you have grants, you have bonds, and you have your ARPA, one-time opportunity. So when I say one-time opportunity, that may be the one-time, COVID-19 opened some floodgates of funding for states, for citizens. And so we were fortunate enough to get some of those dollars in-house as a one-time opportunity. So your cash, your cash is for your expenditures for projects that can be cash-funded by the general fund operating budget, which in turn uses the city's fund balance or rainy day fund to pay for the authorized and approved projects. Just think of it as your cash. Pay as you go. Current revenues pay for projects from the operating budget. So when you, when we talk about collecting revenue, having income, we use those dollars to be able to pay for things out of our general fund and operating budget and just to make the regular operations of the city move. Bonds. I wanted to just kind of show, because we talk about bonds and we've been, your ears are probably bleeding from all of the bond reports that we've had recently. So just for those, as a quick snapshot, authorized projects can be bond-funded. Debt is acquired to pay for approved capital projects. The city is required to pay monthly installment payments to the bondholders until the debt is paid in full. The average years to pay off debt for each bond sale is 20 to 30 years. Bond rating agencies consider all debt acquired by the city in determining the capacity of debt that the city can manage for current and future repayment. Now, the two types of bonds that we discussed, will you hear me talk about GEO bonds? Those are your general obligation bonds. Those bonds are generated based on tax-generated revenue from citizens. You pay your real estate taxes, that makes our general fund go around. Now, we talk about revenue bonds, which was, is what we've discussed as far as our utility. So revenue bonds are used or are able to be, well, we are able to actually have revenue bonds based on providing services to the public. So revenue bonds are based on rates. You pay water bills, those are pretty much your proprietary funds, those, that is where you receive your money to do other things for the city. Grants. Grants are authorized projects, authorized projects can be financed with grant funding, state, local, and federal. They're awarded to the city through competitive application processes. We've had a conversation about the infrastructure bill. That is a competitive process that we mentioned last night. So that's a grant process. The funding is usually not required to pay back unless the funds have not been exhausted by the required deadline for the granting agency. So just like our ARPA funds, if we don't spend them by the deadline, we are going to be required to return those funds back to the federal government. Matching components, when required, can also be a match. We have some police grants we get for cash match. We can use some in-con funding, and there can be some matching funding that we use our salaries, not all, but some. Those are just opportunities I wanted to bring to light. Now, we have our American Rescue Plan Act ARPA money. This is a one-time opportunity. It's a federal pass-through to states, to local governments. They're awarded to localities without a competing... without a competing application process. We only had to be a locality with a need, and they provided us with these funds. ARPA is not required as a payback, again, unless you do not exhaust the funds by the deadline provided. No matching components were required for the use of those funds. But they have reporting guidelines, and they have categorical guidelines. So you have to be within the categories, and we've had that discussion several times. So terms to understand, a lot of times, I'll sit and I'll discuss authorized and funded, authorized and unfunded. And I wanted us to have a conversation about that so that we're all clear as we move forward. So our capital projects, every year, the city adopts the budget, and those projects that city council, and I'll use the dams that we have to replace, or we have requirements that we need to meet in order to ensure that those are in compliance. Those projects have been authorized by previous city councils to get that done. Let's say to the tune of $20 million. That is a project that's authorized, but we don't have full funding because we have other needs. Then, that becomes financing has not been identified, but the project has been approved. So you'll hear me say authorized, but not funded. Then, you'll hear me say authorized and funded. For instance, we're doing this bond hearing. We sat through the bond hearing yesterday, not sat through, but it was presented. And we're moving forward with the bond. Therefore, we've identified specific projects. Council has approved those projects, we've identified them for needing funding, and those dollars are going to be able to fund those projects. Authorized and This is utilities, authorized and unfunded. We have authorized during the course of this city, we're down, we're now having projects that totaled to $308 million. The projects have been spent or expended or obligated to date, and these are unaudited as of 6/30/22. So we're going through our audit. That's why I have the most up-to-date numbers. And I will say unaudited because, again, our 21 numbers are, have been audited, our 22 numbers are being audited. So at this point, and there may be some adjustments, that's why I say unaudited. So we have $172 million in expended expenditures, and we've obligated to date. So we started with $308 million worth of projects. We spent $172 million worth of projects. So where we are in our unfunded projects, we've authorized these projects to happen, but we have not received funding for them or have identified. That's $136 million worth of projects. Now, that's up to '23. When we go back to '24, when we move forward into the budget season, there will be some additional things that council will identify, as well as the city engineer and some other departments, that will be capital projects that need to be done in order for the safe, healthy, and welfare for the citizens. So as we look at that $136 million, we say, now, what are we doing to bring that number down? We are going after a bond, a bond of $25 million, which will now bring our projects down to $111 million, which we need to find funding for until those projects are complete.
Question.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
So Ms. Terry, explain, when we say, from our discussion yesterday, we have the $25 million to bring down this original $308 million, but 10 million of it is going towards projects that have already been expended?
Gotcha.
Okay.
Great question, and I knew you would ask, so I was prepared. So, bond, what we're doing is, we're having a bond sale, and Mr. Davenport, which is the consulting firm, or our financial advisor, said, there will be, we will be reimbursed for $10 million. So, we have $25 million worth of bonds that we are going to receive. We already have 17 projects identified on the books. We've already spent cash of $10 million out of the utility fund to fund these.
Now, let me ask you this. So the $308 million, does that include these projects?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, 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 yes. They include these projects. And again, out of 308, after, so at the 136, the 308 are the original projects, 172 we spent, we're down to 136 before we add new projects. 25 million is going to go toward those projects already on the books. And so, when we say reimburse ourselves, we're just continuing to put cash back into the system so that we can continue these projects. Because remember, utilities is its own fund, so they have other responsibilities for operations that absorb their regular budget. So when we pull cash from utilities, it reduces their ability to do these larger projects.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yes, very fair.
So, bond sales help keep cash flow for CIP projects, and I, it identifies projects that will be earmarked for the funds, which we have here. Now, general government is where you have your regular CIP. We have 162 projects in our general fund or general government for CIP. Those can be found in your annual report. It is Exhibit M, if I'm not mistaken. But that's, that again, $294 million worth of projects that have been authorized over the course of. And now, we are, have spent $189 million worth of our funds and bonds to do these projects. Now, you have $106 million left of projects to fund, okay? So which now says, you're, at some point, you're going to authorize me to go after bonds, you're going to authorize me to use one-time opportunities, you're going to authorize me to use some grants, because, again, like the grants we just were able to get. And then, you're going to authorize me to use cash to get those done, because you've already told me, get them done, Ms. Terry. Where you get the money, but get them done. Now, we talked about going after a GEO bond. Remember, we talked about how much money we would actually have at one time, so we need to get those things taken care of while we have this opportunity. The GEO bond sale will actually happen sometime between '23 and '24, because we can't go after money every year, because that acquires debt on the city. Yes, sir?
Just, just as a, as a point of understanding for everybody, how much, based on the unfunded, unfunded projects and what we already have outstanding, how much does that add to our debt capacity?
Well, our debt-
I mean, you know, our debt limit, because we do have a debt limit, right?
Correct. So our debt limit, again, for the general fund, this has not changed any more than when we did our budget prior, from the last conversation we had, because that has not changed. Because, again, we haven't done any more bond sales.
Right.
This is pushed out. And we have not, we did a utility bond, I wasn't here, but it was in 2019.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, the last figures we have for debt are still.
Okay.
Until we get this new bond, that's when things will change. However, we would have paid off some debt at that time. So I don't want to randomly give you a number.
No worries.
But just know that as we acquire debt, we're paying off debt. That's how we're able to maintain and manage.
Very good. Thank you. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Ms. Terry, from, from our previous presentation, the GEO bond max, is that 40 million?
Okay, I'm sorry.
The, the maximum amount that we can go after with the GEO bond without going over our policy?
Right. We were looking at 40 million, at $2 million for the payment.
Okay, yeah.
So when we talked about overall, what we were saying, this was, as long as we stay within our limit, then we're good. And that's why we came upon that amount. Now, ARPA. ARPA funds, we've received to date $56.84 million. The first allocation was obligated, and I won't say the first allocation, but I would say we've obligated $32.74 million since we've received those funds. We have available for ARPA spending of $24.1 million. Now, bear with me, because this, I don't want to complicate things, but I really want to be as transparent so everybody can follow me. So the available funding sources, what I was trying to accomplish here is to say, this is what we have right now for spend power, and this is what we will have later, for future. For instance, we have available cash right now, but I won't go into this first one until we, till a little later. But we were, we received money back in 2019 from an appropriation from schools, and it's sitting on our books. We have ARPA available cash of the 24 million, as we see in the previous slide, which gives us spending power or authority of $29 million current cash on hand. We have possible future potential financing sources. We have a return, at the end of the year, schools determines whether, and council decides whether they want to receive that appropriation back from schools to put it in CIP for schools or some additional program that schools has. We don't have that figure yet, we won't get that figure till the end of September. We have a proposed bond sale. We said 20 million, but we could possibly go to the 40, but I didn't want to stretch it for the sake of this presentation. We have utility potential available funding of $6 million, which is a DEQ loan that could possibly reduce the utility's outstanding authority more. So just as we look at all of our possible resources, we have $55 million possible dollars, but 29 million available dollars. Now, where we are for ARPA is future discussion. Council gave direction to the city manager to go in and determine the priority for the further discussion items. I want to go through those, just to give you the priority, give you the funding sources, and then come back and ask, line by line, how would you want me to proceed? Now, for Tier 1, we looked at the seawall replacement, ebony heights, elevated tank rehab, Prentice Park, and design for projects. For Tier 2, those are more of our crime areas. We need citywide crime reduction, and those would deal with public safety, crime reduction actions and programs. We need the software, we need security fencing. Funding for streetlights has gone up some, from the previous. We have doorbell cameras, we need to pay for that cost. Enhanced citywide cameras, we have a dollar amount specific for that. Community engagement, we have rock the block and other activities and programs citywide. We also have some minor facility modifications and updates to the police headquarters. We have recreation as Tier 3, and that is the facilities upgrades and improvements for what has already been budgeted. So we want to have those dollars to start those programs or renovations. We have ARPA school projects. One of the things that I wanted to discuss with you all when we go back through this is, the schools received ARPA funding. However, their funding is reimbursable, so they did not receive upfront dollars like the city did. So at this point, their projects start at about $20 million to get the HVAC. They were very limited to what projects they could do under their ARPA program guidelines and criteria. So those equate to about $20 million, and they don't have the cash flow to start those projects. So what they're looking at is for the city to start those projects, get them done. Right now, their timeframe is shorter than the city's, but with hope and expectation, their timeframe is going to be on the same page as ours. So we have two things going on here. Our projects and school projects, which are on a tighter timeframe, but they don't have the funding to get started. So I just wanted to, I don't know if you all knew that.
Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, and then Councilman Moody.
Will we be reimbursed, that money?
So with hopes. So the, the thing is, expectation is to be reimbursed, because we would have to, they would have to submit an application. And so, based on the return, the, the state could say, your application is complete, you can get it all back. Your application is incomplete, you won't get it. So we're moving forward as if we're going to get those dollars back.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
That, that would answer my question, but what type of assurance will we have? Will that be a written agreement?
Great question. That is what we're discussing now. We're determining what exactly, where we stand. Does it look like we'll get 10 projects done for them or 2? What is the agreement of those return funds? Are we going to have them, give them our bank account? Are we going to have them, a promissory that when they receive those funds, they'll give them back? We don't want to have to reduce any of their funding in order to receive those funds, but that's a conversation we need to have before we can move forward. And that's why I put it here for that tonight.
So that's occurring now, that conversation?
That's occurring now.
Okay. Thanks.
Dr. Whitaker, and then Councilwoman Lucasberg.
So on, so Ms. Terry, on page, on page 13, where you have the financing sources, and you have the $5 million at the top, that's part of the risk management from the Portia Public Schools, those, those funds were transferred over from the schools as supposedly being held by the city? Were they transferred to be used by the city or to be held by the city?
Well, I have to go into the agreement, but my understanding is that, that, every year, the schools determines how much they have left, and the city decides whether they can reappropriate those funds and work them back into their budget, or they give those dollars back to the school. It was supposed to be, my understanding, that those funds were held for future use, just in case they come short, they need them later. But the reason that I put those, that, those dollars there is because these projects are for the schools. So if we had or needed additional funding to get these things done, council could give the direction to use those toward those school projects.
And that, and that would be reimbursed by the schools?
Not the $5 million. The $5 million is yours.
Well, I guess I'm talking about on paper, well, on paper, if the, if funds were allocated to the school to begin those projects, the expectation is that the schools would reimburse the city?
Oh, two different things. So you have the $5 million that's been there since 2019. We have that in our bank account.
Right.
The second thing is addressing the schools with their ARPA projects. Now, those funds, expectation would be reimbursed to us.
Right.
There's not an expectation here on the $5 million at all, because we have those funds in our hand to be able to do. Now, whatever agreement, I don't know what that could have been, was, but it, my understanding, for future projects or for something, if they run short somewhere, those would be like a cushion, because they're not able to hold a fund balance. They have to do something, either reappropriate it back to the schools or the city, that goes back to the city to our bottom line.
So, so the $5 million couldn't be used instead of us touching our, any ARPA money?
Oh, yes.
The $5 million could be used-
Yes, sir.
-to assist with the school project, and they would reimburse that?
They wouldn't reimburse this.
No, well-
They would reimburse, oh, okay, I know it, okay.
Well, I'm saying, in lieu of using the ARPA, you would use this, since it's their money, and we're holding, and they would just reimburse it to keep the fund there.
The whole thing?
Right.
Yeah. And they, the reimbursement would only be, so if we use the $5 million for startup, for their projects, say, to get them started, because their timeline is shorter, then if the city, when they request those funds back, when the schools request those funds back, the city can say, we can put that back. Or the city can say, it's going to drop to our bottom line because we have even more projects for the schools to do. So this would just be startup money. But to your question, yes. If that was- If that was the direction that we're given, go ahead and use this five million dollars with the understanding that you'll put it back once you get reimbursed for that, that is possible.
Okay, okay.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Great, thank you. The, for the school project, I, I'm glad you mentioned that their ARPA funds were not uploaded front like the city's, because we thought that their thirty-six million was sitting there as well, so that was good information. But do we have a listing of the school projects that they want to, to do? Do we know what they are, and do any of them overlap with some of the ones that we were considering that were proposed but not funded?
Okay, great question. Well, the schools only can do HVAC projects for their schools, so that didn't overlap for anything that we were doing for the schools per se. Now, James, Mr. Wright, engineering, has been working with the schools, and he has a list of those projects. At some point, if you all would like that list, or so, or how it would be presented would be direction of the city manager, but that would be an option so that you will fully aware of what is being requested and the timeline of what could possibly get done, and not have over expectation that we can do all their projects and ours sit on the back end. This would be a parallel track that we would have to run. And again, because schools are schools, they're in session. So timeline, timing, all of that would determine what could possibly get done in the, in the timeframe that ARPA is allowable.
Great, okay. And I guess, now, since I have the open mic, can I go ahead and add? Back when you were speaking about the, the grants, I know we get police grants, we get Department of Behavioral Health grants, and Department of Social Services, and sometimes it might say the grant is a twenty-five thousand dollar allocation, they have to match it. So do those funds come from the current budget amount of money, or do it come in the new? Because we might have just approved them yesterday, and where does they match? Is it in the old budget?
That's a great question. All right, so the beautiful part about a grant. Grants have timeframes and deadlines and timelines. Grants can be multi-year, grant can be one year. So if we get a grant, say like in September, today we got a grant, yay! That's money that the city does not have to pay. So you may get a gun violence grant, and it may say, part of this grant, and when you wrote this grant, you said that you could provide a contribution to match those funds. Your contribution may be twenty-five percent, and it determines, the criteria, criteria would determine what that would look like. So if it is for salaries, then that means you have a salary savings somewhere, because the salaries that would be to your regular operating budget now can be identified as covered through grant. So it just depends on how the grant is written. So to, the answer to your question, two-fold, yes and yes. It can provide a salary savings, and it would be in the current year, because the old original, because when a grant comes, you don't know you're going to get that grant. You may apply for the grant, but you can't put in your book, budget book, that I'm going to get twenty-five million dollars, and it never comes. Chickens before the, eggs before the chickens, whatever it is. But we want to make sure that every grant dollar that we get allows us a savings where it is for operating, because there is some matching component, and that's just one less dollar that you don't have to use. Say if you get a grant for bulletproof vest, and I'm sorry I'm using police to death tonight, but since we're there, then you get a grant for bulletproof vest, guess what? Now you don't have to spend that money out of your operating budget, and you can use those dollars to do something else necessary and needed in the public, in the community, with your staff. So it just helps support other things that you do, that's why we love going after grants, free money.
Yes.
Did I answer your question?
Yes, that, that was perfect, thank you.
Okay. So, tier three, we went through that. Tier four, okay. So there's been a request for some additional dollars for the sheriff. They weren't presented during the budget session, but here we are now as an opportunity to be able to assist in that category. The sheriff has asked for sixty-five hundred dollars per deputy, this would be a one-time opportunity. Now, what I was, what I'm, why I put this here or in discussion is because if we do a one-time, now it doesn't have to be the sixty-five he asked, but it would show some, some help in retaining his officers. But it can be any amount that council agrees to, one time. And then during budget season, we can work with the sheriff to adjust those supplements, if that is something that he wishes to do for his staff. The reason I say one time because it does not go to salaries. When we do bonuses, it does not match or go toward your salary per se for compensation purposes of retirement benefits. So a bonus would just give that one-time opportunity, it gives him an opportunity, it buys him some time for retention. It buys him some time to get some things done before we go into our budget sessions. So then he can properly prepare for the long-term sustainability of adding those supplements, additional supplements to their salaries, so that they can be a part of their annual salary and compensation, which is they receive retirement benefits on.
And, 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 Ms. Terry, a couple of things I want to ask. Why do you specifically, I think I know why, but why would you specifically want to do the, the bonus versus the salary? I know it's off-budget, and it wasn't a budgeted item, is it due to the fact that it's more expensive to do it the other way?
Absolutely. When you give a increase to a person's salary, it goes toward their retirement benefit. And what the city pays in retirement benefits and other benefits, you have hospitalization, retirement, you have, one more, long-term disability, it's just a lot of things that go into your salary. And even the tax reporting requirement for your salary increases as your salary base increases. So if to do it this way, it gives them a one-time, it doesn't impact your credible compensation, and it gives you enough opportunity and time to work with the budget to adjust. Because remember, the sheriffs, actually, the state did not give out their budget till late August.
Yes.
And so with the sheriff, they had several adjustments to their budget. They had their regular budget, they had the base salary increased. They had a two-hundred dollar per year for every year of service that you were with the city, with the sheriff. And then there was a five percent increase across the board. So at some point, we as finance and budget are going to have to come back to the city because we did not budget for those things in the budget. It was not known that these things were going to come. So we're going to have to come back to council and make some adjustments to this. Because of those increases, he's going to absorb most of his budget before the budget year-end, because he was not prepared to pay that out. So we're going to have to come back to council to do an adjustment on his budget. Yes, sir.
And the second part to my question, certainly we appreciate the work that the sheriff and his department does in our city. And I know that there had been talk over the years that those folks, particularly in the sheriff's department, were not, as you said, the supplement wasn't increased in years. The state did appropriate five percent to those types of folks this year. My question is that, in doing this, I'm sure you've talked to the sheriff, and, or may have discussed something with them. Is, is, is this a direction that, that they can support?
So I'll, I'll yield to the city manager.
Madam City Manager, is this a direction which they can support?
Yes, sir, I spoke to the sheriff earlier today and told him what our recommendation would be, and for us to recommend this to council, and then come to the table and have discussions about increasing the supplement during the budget season.
And, and ultimately, we're striving to hopefully help them become more competitive?
Yes. And since we're on this subject, I don't want to leave out, because we were retaining and trying to manage public safety, we were doing things that were in order. So we took, we took the recommendation of council to ensure that police officers, because they were an art, a hot commodity, to get those employees retained. Then we're looking at the fire, because fire also had a concern and wanted, we were dealing with compression.
Right.
So now we have sheriff. So I just want to make sure that as we proceed, that we continue to move in the priority of public safety, and make sure that fire doesn't feel like they're being left out. Because, but the reason I didn't bring them up here is because we budgeted for those items. We budgeted for fire, we budgeted for police, retention. So they were taken care of. So now, once we do fire, if it is the desire of council to move forward under the direction, given the city manager direction and consensus, we can have that conversation and take care of this as well, but through ARPA dollars.
Thank you, ma'am.
Clear.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
And how much was the public safety retention bonus?
They were five thousand dollars, so it was thirty-five hundred, so it was a couple of things that were going on. It was thirty-five hundred for retention, another fifteen hundred if you lived in the city, and about, out of the complement of about a hundred and seventy-nine, I think fifty-one officers live in the city of Portsmouth. So that was about five thousand. And then we also did frontline pay, which was about two thousand off the top. And then we did an additional five hundred, thank you for working here bonus. So... I hope that answered your question. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, so... Now, affordable, tier five, affordable housing for PRHA. The contribution to the senior living, I know PRJ is going to come back on the twenty-seventh and give a presentation, but because they asked, I wanted to put this here, just because it was a conversation had. Now, the Housing Resource Center is the temporary shelter for homelessness. The city has already done, in our first allocation, of five point nine million dollars, but because of increased costs, because of construction, because of every day, the dollar gets, you have to pay more and more and more. Supply and demand, we are now looking at an additional four point five million dollars just to be able to complete that project. So I just wanted to put that in there. Now, I hope you can see this. One of the recommend, council had requested that we look at this as a recommendation. So what I tried to do here, and, and if you have any questions, please stop me. I listed all the projects that we have for ARPA, second this, this discussion, in priority order, as I did under the priority tier order. So what we did was I looked at these projects, and we said, now what, how do you want to finance them under recommendation of staff? So the first column is actually the, the priority or the projects. The second column, where it says current, current means we have those dollars to do that now. Where we have future is where we have GO bond sales. Where we have future for twenty-four city budget is because some of these things you can add into the budget. Again, authorized, unfunded, but the projects have made the books. And these projects are not on the books, other than the water tank and seawall, because they've always been CIP. So hopefully, that will give you some idea of why I categorized, so we can go through them. The seawall, I'm saying, we put, because of further discussions from council, I made the seawall a future GO bond sale. Because we've been working on the seawall, if we can keep working on the seawall, we're going to work on the seawall forever. So ebony heights, ebony heights is for flooding and some other things, and if, we need James to come up and talk about some of these projects, we can, but we've talked about them before. And I believe that is just one of the three phases that we may be dealing with for ebony heights, but it would help that. So I put that under ARPA dollar because that was never really a project under CIP, and because it's such a need, we figured while we have the money, get it done. Now we have the water tanks, so I put three million to current CI, to, to current ARPA, because the month, the amount continues to increase because supply and demand. And then I put a million dollar under the utility bonds. So then Prentice Place, same thing, I staggered it out, because I know we can use some of that current utility money, we can use some of the future GO bonds, and we can budget for some of the rest of those funds, because it can be, it's phase one of three, I believe. Now, the design, we need design money to do these projects, because again, they weren't on the books to start with. So we allocated two-hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the design. Also, now we're going into the crime reduction. Crime reduction, five hundred thousand, and it's actually one point six. These are going to be the strategies that the police and what he needs to get all this stuff done citywide. Crime software, he just gave the presentation, the hundred and twenty-five was what was the estimate, but again, if there are additional costs associated with some of the strategies, we want them there. And again, I took five hundred thousand into ARPA, and then for future, for the twenty-four budget, that's why I have the one point one million, because we can budget for that. Now you, we can spend ARPA dollars, that would be where we want, however, if there are costs associated, we want to make sure that we identify those for future. Now we have security fencing, we say, we definitely say that's safety because that's part of the operations building. Street lighting, street lighting has absorbed James, Mr. Wright's budget. We had originally four fifty, it's absorbed his budget, ARPA budget for his allocation, and now he needs additional dollars to complete. Doorbell cameras, that speaks for itself. Enhanced citywide cameras, we just had a presentation. Community engagements, I put a portion for ARPA now, because this is going to be ongoing. And so we can prepare, better prepare and budget for those dollars. Police headquarters, clearly they need another restroom, they need some enhancements. We've done major work over there for updating and upgrading, because they're there. Eventually, we will get a police station, but when, till we get one, this is what we have. Recreation, clearly we want to use those dollars to get us started on those recreational projects, field houses, Norcom, Manor, Churchland, Turf Fields, we got, we need something to get started. And that cost in Charles Peak, and that cost has increased, so that's why we just dedicated and made sure that that stayed. Funding for school projects, again, that, that million dollars is basically for startup. Just in case you don't want to use the five million, you need something to get started if we're going to move forward with the school ARPA projects. Chief retention bo, not chief, sheriff retention bonus, that's there because they were estimating a million, but you have taxes, it could be grossed up, it could be regular, we got a lot going on, so I just wanted to make sure we had enough funds, if this desire of council to move forward. Affordable housing for PRHA, they're going to give their presentation. I know there were some questions about the credit that they receive, we've got additional information, and it seems that that's a one-time credit, I just don't want to go into that kind of detail if he's going to be presenting that. And a Housing Resource Center for the additional construction costs associated with building the new facility. Now, so we're at thirty-six million, so twenty-four would be covered, the other ones could be future, current, and budget. So the reason I put the PPS cash there is again, that could be used, whether it's reimbursed or not, those are actual dollars, we can get started on some of these projects for schools if needed. And, questions and answers?
Dr. Whitaker, you, you, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Terry, very thorough. The five million future GO bonds, so that means that of that possible forty million, that you would only be using about thirty-five, I mean, five million, that gives thirty-five million for other projects, how is that?
No, simply because the utility bonds, that five million is for utility only, and those have been identified, if we're talking about the same thing.
Okay, well, okay, so the GO bond, that's not the general fund bonds? Will you have the column future GO bonds?
Right, we, right, so future GO bonds would be a part of the forty million.
Right.
So when we do the forty million, twenty or forty, so we can make sure we have enough. So when we do the forty million, twenty or forty, so we can make sure we have enough, those projects can be dedicated to that. So it would reduce, so yeah.
You, you have thirty-five, so this is?
We have thirty-five left.
Okay, all right. My, my, like I said, my only, like I've said before, my only concern up here with your recommendation is the one point two for the PRHA.
So if it would please council, so that I don't get lost in this, and so that we can know to move forward, if I could please go through these, because I know we're not voting tonight, but if I can get a consensus on items, so that I'm clear on how to move with the engineer on some of these projects. So if we look at staff Mac recommendation, is it a consensus of council to, uh, for seawall? Let's start with seawall, to say that three million dollars should be for future, um, bond use? Is that consensus for council?
Yes. If we would all just, just raise our hand on the visual, and then I think that'll be suffice, because I think that works best.
Mr. Mayor, can I just?
Absolutely, sir, you have the floor.
In the interest of time, um, if council is in consensus on all of this, could, could we ask that first, and then if there's some discrepancy, then we could go from there?
I think that's, uh, very appropriate. So, um, and before we, we ask for the consensus, I got to give our team a shout-out. City manager, your team, you guys, I learned some things today, um, and I'm very grateful that you took the approach of really being systematic on how you provided and presented this information. It, it is very well done, and I want to thank you, ma'am, and your staff, and all of you for putting in the effort. This requires work, but I think to Dr. Whitaker's point, um, I did not see anything that was just described that I couldn't agree with. So if...
Other than legs and umbrellas.
Right.
Well, I mean, he said if, if, if we want to make it all appropriate now from a consensus standpoint, I think that is well within the order. So if everyone is in consensus about what was discussed in the recommendations from staff, would you please raise your hand?
And, and Mr. Mayor, what I was saying was, unless there's some discrepancy.
Right, unless there's a discrepancy, yes. Mr. Battle, so you have the floor.
I don't do it often, you know that.
I know.
Right. But you hit it. You did a wonderful job.
Well, thank you.
Yes, you did.
Thank you. Well, we had time today. So this actually, when we, when there is an opportunity like this, I can, I like this better, not that it matters what I like, but I think it gives me the opportunity to really dig into, because I feel like this is the one-on-one budget sessions that we don't get to have. But it definitely gives you the information, because I hear the questions, but I'm not always able to respond. But I try to remember them to come back and say, let me make sure we're all on the same page, because that's the only way this is going to work.
Well, you, you came back with what we asked for.
Well, you said, you do it. So it is a little easier.
So, so just so I'm clear, could you please state, um, the consensus?
Right, my, my only discrepancy is with the one point two for affordable housing, PRHA, um, I would, I would rather see that go to those persons individually.
Okay. I can hold that.
Okay, if you, you wish to hold that, but everything else I then is, if we can all show of hands of that we're in agreement from a consensus standpoint, that will give you the direction, ma'am, and, and your staff to move forward, uh, in presenting this, uh, so that we can move forward.
Thank you so much.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. That concludes our presentations. Thank you.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.